That is concerned.
Continue, sorry.
Sorry, I was just saying, the good news is I have nothing, nothing negative or concerning to report at this point, and I would greatly appreciate the opportunity to finish out the season as we had hoped.
Have you heard comments from the other restaurants in terms of how this is affecting their business? Any issues or concerns there?
I'll provide you the feedback that I received from Rich, the general manager at Burton's. I know Sherry Schuler, the GM of Derby Streets on the call as well, too. She might be able to provide additional feedback, but speaking to Rich at Burton's Grill, he's been very supportive and appreciative that we're there, that it's actually created some new business opportunities for them. He's also, at this point, started to carry our beer at his restaurant.
Oh, that's great.
Seeing a crossover connection, had similar feedback from Mark, the GM at Legal C Bar, and then some of the ancillary retail locations like Crate and Barrel, Polka Dog, Lululemon, Madewell, all of them have been supportive as well, too, to the point that even so that Crate and Barrel is now merchandising our fake beer cans in their retail locations. So overall, I think it's been a benefit to them, but Sherry might have additional feedback that I'm not aware of.
Before going to Sherry, what about parking? Is your, any impact that you've seen in terms of either this interfering with parking, people walking through parking spots where they wouldn't have, no, any concerns from that perspective?
None at all. And I know we actually have hired a photographer on multiple days to get drone photography of the parking lot. The green is not impacting parking occupancy in any fashion, either in the front lot or in the rear lot, and I haven't seen any pedestrian issues or things like that as well.
Great.
Joe, just see when Dave is on his way into the meeting, he's having a computer problem.
Okay, thank you. So I will now turn to Sherry.
Yeah, I echo everything that Mike has said. It has, I mean, I knew it was going to be great, but it has even exceeded my expectations. I mean, if you look around at the Beer Garden, it is children and families, I'm sorry, you can probably hear my kids in the background, children and families, and it's thriving business. I've heard nothing but support from all of our tenants. As I walked around the property last week, they're so excited it's here because the Derby traffic in the summertime, we pick up during the week, and in the weekends, we fall off a little bit because of Cape and beach activities. And so it's been a big help. We see a lot of folks tagging that they were at the Beer Garden, and they go get dinner at Legal C, or they go to Burton's. So just as you said, the managers, Mark and Rich at both Burton's and Legal, are seeing this as a huge benefit. And yeah, I have photos on my computer, if you want me to share of the parking lot, but we are, I think you'd be even, I mean, it is like, there's plenty of parking.
Yes.
And lots of, you know, we can even send them after, but lots of photos of families. I've had a photographer at every single event, so that we can track this accordingly. But we are thrilled. Untold is the best partner in the world. I've been telling everybody, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
That's really great. Tom, do we have anyone from the restaurant opening group, restaurant reopening working group who can report on this?
Chief Jones might be, have a report from Jeff Gilroy on that.
Chief Jones, are you there?
I am. Good evening.
There we go.
I've lost internet a couple times, so if it goes out, spare with me. Yeah, we've had, as far as police department, we've had no issues at the events that they've had so far up at the Derby Street Green.
So do you have officers on site during, not consistently, but who are on patrol during the events?
We do. We have the shift officers up there, and Derby Street has also had detail officers up there as well.
Great. And no, nothing adverse to report?
No issues at all, though.
That's, that's great. Liz Klein, any questions or comments on this?
No questions. It sounds like it's been really positive and a really nice collaboration. So thank you to Mike and Sherry.
Excellent. Bill Ramsey?
Yeah, a couple of questions, comments. You know, Sherry, one of the, one of the, one of the hopes was that, was that the restaurant would be serving takeout for people to bring over to Mike's Beer Garden. Do you see that happening?
Yes, lots of cava. And actually, White's Bakery is also going to hit because you can grab a calzone, warm it up, and bring it back. So it's a lot of walking, Joe. I myself walked over to White's and got a calzone for my family. So yeah, it's been working out really well.
Great. And Mike, I was hoping to get up there last week. I did not make it, but I'm looking forward to getting up and checking it out myself. I've heard great things from people in town. So congratulations. And your hours of operation, is it Thursday through Sunday? Is that correct?
Friday through Sunday.
Friday through Sunday. And what time?
Friday and Saturday are 12 to 9:00 p.m. Sunday is 12 to 7:00 p.m.
Excellent. Well, glad to hear it's going great. So well done.
Thank you, sir.
Great. Are there any members of the public with comments or questions about this application? Seeing none, I know this is a little down on our vote list, but I will accept a motion on the Untold Brewing LLC special one-day licenses.
I'll do this one. Make a motion to approve the issuance of 18 separate special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses to Untold Brewing LLC, the applicant, for a series of events known as the Green at Derby Street Shops, to be held on the consecutive Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, beginning on Friday, July 16, 2021, and ending on Sunday, August 22, 2021. The hours of the events shall be limited to Fridays and Saturdays from 12 to 9:00, and Sundays from 12 to 7:00. Such licenses shall be further subject to the following conditions. The event location is shown as the Green located between REI and Coles at the Derby Street Shops, which space is approved for use for community events by the modified special permit issued by the zoning board of appeals dated August 20, 2020, issued to WSM Hingham Properties LLC, and shown on the restricted use area plan dated March 9, 2020, and approved in connection with a special permit. In order to comply with the special permit, the event location shall be modified in order to provide a minimum six-foot-wide pathway between the rear and main parking fields. Access shall be maintained to the fire sprinkler connection on the Coles building facade. All applicable permits shall be obtained from the Board of Health. Any rain dates beyond August 22, 2021 shall be subject to further approval of the Select Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Bring this now to a vote. Liz Klein?
Hi.
Bill Ramsey?
Hi.
Joe Fisher? Hi. This is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is a great addition to Derby Street and to the town of Hingham. So thank you. We skipped on our agenda, the, the interdepartment, intradepartment, reserve fund and reserve fund transfers. We're going to continue, might as well just finish these licenses, and then we'll go back to those transfers. So the next item on our agenda is to approve the issuance of three separate special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses to Barrel House Z LLC for sunset picnics at Ware River Farm, to be held on July 22, July 29, and August 5, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Who do we have to discuss this one? Looking to see, is, is Kieran, or is Dan, Dan here? I'm not seeing.
Anyone there?
Is, is Kieran, or is Dan, Dan here? I'm not seeing.
I don't see them. Joe, I can tell you that the application was complete and was reviewed by Dave, by the police chief, but I don't see the applicant in the space.
Do you know if we should expect to see them? I can?
I don't. We don't. Sometimes they, they want to attend, other times they don't. We don't generally require it, but.
So let me just go back to the agenda then. Can you just?
Next event is here, Mr. Fenari.
Yep. So if we're not going to have anyone from this, from Barrel House Z, maybe, is there someone who can describe the picnics at the Ware River Farm?
Dave, are you, Chief Jones, are you able to explain the process over there?
Sure. Sorry, I lost connection again there for a second. The, it was a series of events that they have up there that are running on different weekends. We've, they've run similar events in the past. We've never had any issues up there. We also, similar to Derby Street Shops, do patrols through the area when they are having events, and will do the same if these events are approved.
Are you comfortable with the hours, that from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m.?
I am, yes.
Okay. Liz Klein, any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions. I know last, at the last meeting, we confirmed that it was a similar setup. You know, we had gone through the, the structure and the layout. So I'm sure it's, it's the same, and I think they've been operating well. They're on Thursday evenings. It's not a weekend. But I think they've gone well, so I don't have any questions.
Great. Bill Ramsey?
I'm comfortable moving on the application. We've done a lot of these. I think it's all a similar setup, so happy to move on if you'd like.
So are there any members of the public who have questions about the proposed special licenses to Barrel House Z? Seeing none, I would accept, accept a motion on this.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the issuance of three separate special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses to Barrel House Z LLC for sunset picnics at Ware River Farm, to be held on July 22, July 29, and August 5, 2021, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Great. The, the next one is to consider issuance of three separate special one-day wine and malt beverages license, licenses to Vitamin C Brewing for Sunset Picnics at Ware River Farm, to be held on September 2, September 9, and September 16, this time from 5:00 p.m. to sunset. Tom, do we have anyone here for this?
Hi, folks. This is Dino Fenari. I'm here from on the Vitamin C brewing.
Good to see you.
You as well. Thank you.
So if you could please walk us through what is being proposed?
So it's my understanding, similar to the events that have already happened with Stellwagen, and what's been proposed with Barrel House Z, a similar, similar idea of the picnics, where we would, we would be there to set up and pour beer for, for ticketed guests. I believe, my understanding was it's 150 tickets were looking to be sold by the trustees for this event. And then, again, we would be there to provide beverages for, for those folks.
Let me just, so what are the dates that are being proposed here? It's?
September 2, September 9, and September 16, again, all Thursdays.
Because I'm, I'm looking at the ad, which talks about this running through October 6, but what I'm.
Yeah. So there are multiple breweries that, what they've done is that the trustees have reached out for ourselves, Barrel House Z, and a few others to, to each take specific days to, you know, to rotate.
So you are, you are within the timeframe that's being advertised, but you are not the entire timeframe?
Correct, sir.
Great. Chief Jones, any comments or concerns? Are you there?
There we go. Sorry, no comments or concerns. Some of the last ones, we, we have the similar plan set up through them, and they're, they cooperate with us.
Okay. Liz Klein?
No, no questions.
Bill Ramsey?
Thanks, Liz.
Yeah, Dino, good to see you.
You as well, Mr. Ramsey.
You on the other end of the pandemic, and.
Thank you. It's been a tough one.
Very happy. You guys are doing great. And I, just for the record, I would comment that I am familiar with Mr. Fenari's business, and it's excellent, very well-run. It's an excellent, excellent brewery. It's, it's one of the up-and-coming breweries on the South Shore, and will soon be one of the best in the state. So good to see you doing well, Dino.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Great. So any questions from members of the public? Seeing none, Bill, I will accept a motion on this.
Make a motion to approve the issuance of three separate special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses to Vitamin C Brewing for Sunset Picnics at Ware River Farm, to be held on September 2, September 9, and September 16, 2021, from 5:00 p.m. to sunset.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye.
We are approved. Next item?
Thank you.
Is, well, thank you, is to consider approval of three separate special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses, I'm sorry, yet, to WM Brewing Company, Inc., DBA Widowmaker Brewing, for Sunset Picnics at Ware River Farm, to be held on September 23, September 30, and October 7, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Do we have anyone here from the applicant?
Yeah, Colin Fuller from Widowmaker Brewing.
Great. So can you, I suspect it's very similar to what we've just heard.
Exactly the same as the Stellwagen, as Dino referred to, previously approved, and the Barrel House and Vitamin C that were just approved.
Yep. Chief Jones, any comments and concerns on this one?
No concerns on this one either.
Great, thank you. Liz Klein, questions?
No questions or concerns. Thank you.
Bill Ramsey?
No questions or concerns.
Any member of the public have comments or questions? Seeing none, I will accept a motion on this one.
I will make a motion to approve the issuance of three separate special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses to WM Brewing Company Incorporated, doing business as Windowmaker Brewing, for Sunset Picnics at Ware River Farm, to be held on September 23, September 30, and October 7, 2021, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m.
Is there a second? Great. We come to vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye.
We are approved. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to cover the, the next item before we go back to the transfers, and that is to consider a request of the Hingham Downtown Association for the annual summer sidewalk sales on July 29 through July 31, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Tom, do we have someone here to address this?
Not sure if Lynn made the meeting or not. She did speak with us this afternoon. We corrected those dates, and this is a, a big deal for the, for the Downtown Association. Liz, you probably have more familiarity with this event than I, than I do, but just from your time with them, but, but if you want to speak to it.
Sure. It's an annual event every summer at the end of July. It's a Thursday, Friday, Saturday typically. I was just checking the calendar. I think it's still Thursday, Friday, Saturday, 9 to 6. So this, some of the stores stay open a little bit late, but the main difference is they do use the sidewalk space, so tables and racks will be placed on the sidewalk. I know they're always careful to allow for pedestrian access, including wheelchairs and strollers, but there, there will be some signage probably, and racks on the sidewalks downtown.
So Tom, am I correct, the dates are on a Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, but not on Sunday?
So it's July 29, hold on. July 29 is a Thursday, the 30th is a Friday, and the 31st is Saturday. That's right.
So this is not, not the full weekend. It's, 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 it's.
That's right.
Okay, great. No, I've, I have participated in this. I think it's a, it really is a wonderful event for Downtown Hingham and for the community at large. Bill Ramsey, any questions?
I agree with you, Joe. Great event. Happy to support it.
Liz, anything further?
Nope, no questions or concerns.
Any member of the public have comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion on the Downtown Association sidewalk sale.
And make a motion to approve the request of Hingham Downtown Association for the annual summer sidewalk sales on July 29 through July 31, 2021, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Tables and racks will be placed adjacent to the storefronts and not impede or obstruct the pedestrian pathway.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we come to vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye.
It is approved. Thank you. Now we go back to item number three on our agenda, which is to approve, to review and consider approval of interdepartment, intradepartment, and reserve fund transfers for fiscal year 2021. I believe we've got Sue Nickerson, the town accountant, and Tom Mayo, the town administrator, to review this for us.
That's right. Thank you very much, Joe. So like you said, Sue is here with us to walk us through the memo and the individual, the individual request sheets that, that accompany that memo. This is the annual effort at the end of every year to true up our budgets as, at, you know, at the end of the fiscal year that now ends tomorrow. We have a reserve fund, as everyone knows, to help fund emergency, emergency shortages, and not often, but on a fairly regular basis, the town needs to extend that reserve fund that was done this past, I believe it was, when did we have town meeting? Early May, thereabouts. So at town meeting, and on Article 11, we extended the reserve fund by some $600-plus thousand, and that money is now available for the purposes that we have before you tonight. In large part, the, the reserve fund transfer is for legal expenses. There are three, three additional reserve fund requests, and then we have a few interdepartmental transfers and intradepartmental transfers, that way, then again, that we can go through. So, Joe, I don't know how you want to do this, but Sue, I'm sure, is queued up and ready to walk us through that memo if you'd like.
I'm, I'm prepared for Sue to walk us through.
Okay. Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All nine of us? This is the least number of people on a selectman, select board meeting I have ever seen.
They have something to do with the temperature outside. People leave from the 90-plus degrees.
It could be. Okay. In your packet, you had a, the first sheet was a recap sheet, and basically it just went through the appropriation of FY21, Article 11, to replenish the reserve fund. We did have one reserve fund so far this year. It was voted on, on 5/4 for the property and liability, which was $353,047. That left $864,937.
If I can just stop you. So, so I see at the beginning, the 629 and the 588 at the top. Explain what those numbers are.
Sure. The 629100 is the original appropriation and town meeting for FY21 Reserve Fund.
Right.
The 588884 was Article 11 in the annual town meeting of May 8, 2021, to transfer money from FY22 into the reserve fund for FY21.
Got it.
That totaled $1,217,984. We voted on, you voted on a reserve fund transfer for property and liability for $353,047 on May 4, which will leave the balance as of today before these transfers of $864,937.
Okay.
The following is the reserve fund transfers. The first is legal, and it is, the request is for $665,185, and this is to pay for the legal cost of the fiscal year. In your packet, you did receive a breakdown of all legal, general litigation, personnel, personnel, real estate, Ware River, and COVID, for a total expenses of $922,184.61. The original budget was for legal for 2021 was $257,000, which leaves a deficit of the $665,185 that we are requesting. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Yeah, the $71,000 that's listed for Ware River, is that for the Rare River Water System?
Yes.
And would those?
It's the transition costs, I believe.
So are those legal expenses to be reimbursed to the town from the water system?
Yes, and I believe it will be early next year.
But we, we need to cover them now because that transfer doesn't happen until next fiscal year.
Exactly.
Liz Klein, any questions on the legal? As the non-lawyer on the board?
Yeah, no questions. No, thank you for walking us through that, though, Sue.
You're welcome.
Bill Ramsey?
No questions. It's just good that our snow and ice last couple of years have been down. Usually that's a big, usually that's a big item for us. So factoring in moving $11,000 over is great.
So on the legal expenses, Sue, I see the $21,000 on COVID. Are those expenses that we will be seeking reimbursement from either state or federal funds?
Yes, well, we, I'm putting together Plymouth County CARES Act package in the next week or two, and that, those are expenses that will be reimbursed next fiscal year.
Great, great. So do you want to take us now from legal to?
Sure. Yes, town meeting. The request is for $45,000, and this, in, in most part, is because we had a special town meeting. Some of the expenses will be reimbursed by COVID, but there is a formula that I'm going to have to go through to figure out between what we would have had inside compared to what we had outside due to the pandemic.
Just, just if you don't mind, so I'm just going to jump in there. Joe, the, and select board, the CARES Act had, had guidelines on how they refund for COVID expenses, and if you had, it was a pre-budgeted item, then they're not eligible for CARES Act reimbursements. So we need to, we can only pay for the cost above and beyond what we would have otherwise paid for, for holding town meeting and special town meeting. So that's what that means.
So we have a budget for regular town meeting. Am I correct? I think it was in the order of 30, around $38,000?
38,182, yes.
Right. So the difference perhaps between the 45 and the 38 might be attributable to COVID-related expenses.
Yeah, it will be something close to that. We just got to do that.
Okay, great. Any, Bill Ramsey, any questions on the town meeting transfer?
Done. Thank you.
Liz Klein? Liz Klein?
Nope, thank you.
So on the town meetings, any way we can build a moderator to cover this or? Don't tell Michael Puzo.
For the record, that was Joe Fisher, not Tom.
Or Sue Nickerson, no, no one.
Walks home with us, Joe.
Okay.
The next one is DPW's Snow and Ice. Amount requested was $11,597. And it was for Snow and Ice. This is the lowest I've ever, would ever had to ask. Sometimes we don't have to ask, but we did go over by $11,596,096.
That's, that's great. So Liz, you don't know that, but as a member of select board, Bill and I had to go out and shovel snow to keep the budget down.
Yeah, thank you for your service.
Town needs you.
Bill, you, you've already commented on this one. Anything else you wanted to address with this, on the Snow and Ice?
No, the only, only comment I'd make for the public knows is like, being the liaison of the DPW, I learned that, you know, a major snow event, which will be a major snowstorm here, costs the town well over north of $200,000. So it just shows you how expensive that, that amount is. And in terms of deficit spending, we can't deficit spend as municipal, people know that, but we do have some leeway with snow and ice because it just gets so much. So good to see this number low and hopefully it stays this way.
Yes. Great. Let's go on then to emergency water service.
The last reserve fund transfer request is for emergency water service. This, this is a flat amount quarterly bill to keep water in the fire hydrants throughout the town. The amount requested is $11,277. And the reason for the request is when we did the FY21 budget, what I do is take the last quarter bill that we receive and pay, multiply it by four, and that's our next year's budget. In the meantime, after the budget was approved, there was a rate increase. And this is the difference between what we have left in the account of $89,461.78 and the actual bill that we will get in a week or two.
So, so this was a rate increase by a query?
Yes.
But this amount to be paid, am I correct?
Will be piled to Ware River.
Ware River Water System.
Yes.
Liz, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Bill?
None. Thank you.
Okay, so that gives us the total reserve fund transfers of $733,059. And could you explain what the surplus means?
Well, the surplus is the difference between what is left in our reserve fund of $864,937 minus all the approved reserve fund transfers. Hopefully you will approve them all. There will be a surplus in that account of $131,878.
And what happens to that?
Right now, I believe I am going to have Tom Mayo send me a memo to encumber this balance just in case something happens in the next 24 hours.
Okay. And then assuming nothing happens, does this go, does this get transferred?
It will fall right to the fund balance. Yes.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So then we now have the interdepartment transfers to be followed by the intra department transfers.
Interdepartment transfers is a transfer between two different departments. The first one is, and just to let you know, state law, mass general law lets us do this the last two months of the year. And only the last two months of the year. That's why we do it in June. So the first one is for $1,146. And it is transferring from the group insurance account to the human resource part-time salary account. And the reason for this is the part-time benefits coordinator needed extra hours for the open enrollment period during the pandemic.
Okay. And, and the other transfer?
And the other transfer is from, request is $60,000. This is from public work salaries to transfer station expenses, the trash expense account. And this is an increase not anticipated in trash disposal costs due to the new contract with CMAS effective January 2021.
Yes, and we, we heard about that. And that's one of the reasons why we voted to have this at the transfer station.
That's right.
Because of the increased costs. So why don't we just go to the intra department and then I'll ask for questions on any of these items?
Intra department transfer, an intra department transfer is a transfer between salaries and expenses or expenses to salaries within the same department. The first one is community planning and the request is for $30,000. And it is going to be transferred from to community planning department head salaries to community planning consulting expense line item. And this is to pay for the consulting help while restructuring the community planning department throughout the year.
And that was occasioned by the departure of the head of that department. That's right?
Yes.
Great. Okay.
And the second one is for the police department. The amount requested is $16,000. It is coming from the police department salaries account to the police department expense account for repair and maintenance of vehicles. And as the vehicle maintenance costs exceeded estimates due to keep, keeping current cruisers longer. Additionally, transition to Ford hybrid options, the equipment did not transfer from the older body style.
Okay.
And the last intra department transfers, the treasurer collector, the amount is $250. And this is going from the part-time salaries to the expense for the postage line item. And this is due to during the pandemic where the building town hall was closed. We were mailing all the payroll checks and direct deposits. The department did able to offset most of this cost, but she was just short about $250.
Okay. Liz, do you have any questions about the inter or intra department transfers?
I do not.
Mr. Ramsey?
I have no questions.
Any member of the public have questions on this? Or on any of the reserve fund transfers? Seeing none, I'm prepared to accept motions first on the reserve fund transfers.
Liz, do you want to do it in blocks? I'll take the first block if you take the second.
Sure.
Okay. So with respect to reserve fund transfers, I'd make a motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to selectmen legal services in the amount of $651,736.
Bill, it's 665185.
It is, right, the, the, our, is in error. It is 665185.
Yeah, we had a late, a late update that we, the vote list didn't get updated. Sorry about that.
I'm sorry.
So what's the, the amount is six?
Six.
665185.
Six, and the amount of 665185.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, ah, we come to vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe Fisher? Aye, it's approved. Next one, Bill.
I'd make a motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to town meeting expenses in the amount of $45,000.
That's right.
There's a second?
Second.
Come to vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher? Aye. Next one, Bill.
I'd make a motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to DPW, Snow and Ice, in the amount of $11,597.
There's a second?
Second.
Come to vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher? Aye. Last one, Bill.
I'd make a motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to emergency water service in the amount of $11,277.
There's a second?
Second.
We now vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher? Aye. Moving to the interdepartment transfers. Liz?
I make a motion to recommend an interdepartment transfer to human resources part-time salary from group insurance for $1,146.
There's a second? Okay, we come to vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Joe, oh, Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher? Aye. Next.
I make a motion to recommend an interdepartment transfer to transfer station expenses, trash from public works salaries for $60,000.
Second.
Come to vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher? Aye. We go now to the intra department transfers. I'll do these. I'll make a motion to recommend an intra department transfer from community planning department head salaries to community planning consultant for $30,000.
Second.
Come to vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher? Aye. I make a motion to recommend an intra department transfer from police salaries to police R and M vehicle expenses for $16,000.
Second.
Now we vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
I'm going to abstain, and I'd ask the record to reflect because this involves police salaries.
Yep.
My brother is a police officer, so I will abstain on this one.
And Joe Fisher? Aye, it's approved. Next, I'll recommend an intra department transfer from treasurer collector salaries part-time to treasurer collector expenses postage for $250.
Second.
Now we vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher? Aye. We are all approved on these.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I got to tell you, your presentation was, was exactly what we needed, I think, to, to understand and make sure that we were doing the right, doing this the right way. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Thank you, Sue. Go get him, tiger.
So next, bear with me one second.
So before we do all of the other appointments, would you mind doing the liquor enforcement officer, just so we can release the chief?
Okay, I will move to consider the appointment of Detective Scott Tracy as a liquor enforcement officer. Chief Jones, can you tell us what this is involved, what this involves and why you recommend making this appointment?
I sure can. So Detective Scott Tracy is newly appointed to detectives this month. So all detectives are liquor license enforcement officers for the town of Hingham. And they report to the Board of Selectmen and provide a, at least one, once annual report to the board on the licensed liquor establishments.
Okay.
So sorry, all detectives are, are liquor enforcement officers.
Right. And, and the board has appointed the other detectives already.
Correct.
Bill Ramsey, any questions?
I have no questions. Just congratulations to Scott on his new appointment.
Liz Klein?
No questions. Thank you.
Any member of the public have comments or questions on this proposed appointment? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Detective Scott Tracy as a liquor enforcement officer.
It's been moved and seconded. How do you vote? Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher? Aye, approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Yeah, and really thanks for, for all your efforts this evening and throughout, throughout the year.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next, we are going to consider appointments and potential reappointments to various town committees and boards. The moderator, along with members of the select board, have spent several days interviewing a good number of highly qualified candidates. It is just awe inspiring to see so many talented folks who are residents of Hingham willing to step up and serve the town and do what they can to make the town a better place for all of us to enjoy. So it's, it's, it's an important responsibility for this board. But it's an important responsibility for each resident of the town to consider what they can do. And so many have stepped up and offered. So it's, it's really wonderful. This year, as in other years, we have had more applicants than we have slots, which is not true in other towns. So we really are grateful for so many people who have stepped up. This evening, I believe that we are going to consider a group of potential appointments or reappointments. It is certainly not an exhaustive list. We are not going to cover every committee. But we are going to do what we can to, with respect to certain committees, knowing that we are not only going to be continuing to evaluate the candidates that have applied, but there are also new candidates who continue to apply and we are going to be interviewing them and seeing how we can best fit everyone in to their committee responsibilities. So with that, I'd like to begin with reappointments. So these would be persons who currently have been serving on a, a committee or a board. And their term is up. They are not termed out. And we think it would be in the best interest of the town to reappoint in certain individuals. So I am going to, I, I was going to deviate from the, from the original listing, but I just may go through. So the first group I'd like to address is the Affordable Housing Trust, which would, we've got appoint, reappointments for a one-year term ending June 30th, 2022, and then reappointments for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2023. So for appointment for a one-year term, and I've gone over this with Tom, and Tom, if you go along with me to make sure I am not deviating from what you and I have previously discussed. I would move to appoint Gregory Waxman, Nancy Kerber, and Elizabeth Von Peer for appointments for a one-year term to the Affordable Housing Trust, the one-year term ending June 30, 2022.
I would second that.
I'll then take a vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher? Aye. And then I would move to reappoint Amy Farrell, John Falvey, and Kathleen Amanti to the Affordable Housing Trust for a two-year term ending June 30, 2023. There's a second?
Second.
We now vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher? Aye. Okay, moving on to the zoning board of appeals. These are appointments for associate members, which have a one-year term. So I would move to reappoint Joseph, help me the pronunciation, Rucchio?
Rucchio.
Rucchio, Andy Touche, David Alrich, Mario Romania, Michael Mercurio, and Lauren Galvin as associate members of the zoning board of appeals for a one-year term ending June 30, 2022.
Second.
Now we vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher? Aye. Moving to the Bear Cove Park Committee. Moving to the Bear Cove Park Committee, I would move to reappoint Edward Matthews to the Bear Cove Park Committee for a three-year term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We come to vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. And I would move to reappoint Susan Kylie to the Beautification Commission for a three-year term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four. There's a second. Okay, we come to vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. And last on my list, Conservation Commission, I would move to reappoint Lori Freeman to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Uh, we come to vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. Okay, Liz, perhaps you can do the next group?
Sure. So I make a motion to reappoint Horatio Hemmings and Kathleen Pellequin as constables for the town of Hingham for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We now vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. Liz?
Okay, do you want me to move on to the next one?
Yes, please.
Okay. I make a motion to reappoint Karen Johnson and Eleanor Latiri to the Council on Aging for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
So a second.
Second.
Just to be clear, this is not the Karen Johnson who's a former member of the select. This is a different Karen Johnson. It's been moved and seconded. Liz Klein, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. It's approved. Next.
I make a motion to reappoint Christine Smith and John J. Bailey to the Country Club Management Committee for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We now vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. It's approved.
I make a motion to reappoint Megan Ward to the Cultural Council for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We now vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye.
I, I, sure. I make a motion to reappoint Nancy Wiley and Brian Stack to the Development and Industrial Commission for a five-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Great. We come to vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye.
I make a motion to reappoint Katie Duran Cutler to the Harbor Development Committee for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We now vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. Bill, would you mind doing the next reappointment group?
Make a motion to reappoint John Fitzsimmons to the Scholarship Fund Committee for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye.
I make a motion to appoint James R. Use, Barbara Cardock, and Dorothy Maganaro to the Shade Tree Committee for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye.
Make a motion to reappoint Daniel Miller Dempsey to the Traffic and Safety Committee for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye.
Make a motion to reappoint Marion Blackmer and James Ippolito to the Veterans Council for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye.
I'd make a motion to reappoint Chrissy Roberts to the Ware River Water System Citizens Advisory Board for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. So I believe that is the list of reappointments. Tom, are there others that you think were on or should have been on the reappointment list that I've skipped over?
Nope, I don't think so.
Okay, great. Um, bear with me one second. Looking for my, um, so now we oh, this is, I'm sorry, I'm looking for my sheet and I, here we go. Now, we are going to consider new appointments to several boards and committees. And again, this is, I think, really just a small subset of the of the committees, but we we need to get going on this. And so I would like to begin by by moving to appoint Michelle Paderniti as an associate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a one-year term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
We vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. And then, bear with me here. I would move to appoint Isabel Robinson to the Tree Preservation Study Committee. Now, I know, Tom, that there's not a term ending on this. Is that correct?
That's right.
So it's for however long this Tree Preservation Study Committee continues.
Yeah, until we can get a bylaw from them and 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 through town meeting.
Right. Okay.
If that's where it goes.
So I've made the motion for Isabel Robinson to the Tree Study Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
We vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. And then I'm going to move on to the Commission on Disabilities. And we have a a at-large appointment as well as appointing a town official. So I would move to appoint Mike Clancy, who is the Building Commissioner, to the Commission of on Disabilities for a one-year term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
We vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. And then I would move to appoint Sharon Allen to the Commission on Disabilities for a three-year term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four. So a second. Okay, we now vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. Next, bear with me as I go go on my list. Is for the Cable TV Advisory Committee. Liz, do you have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to appoint James Byrne to the Cable TV Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. Moving to the Climate Action Planning Committee. Liz, do you have a motion here?
Yes, I make a motion to appoint Catherine Riordan to the Climate Action Planning Committee.
Second.
We vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. I'm going to move to the, let's see, the Development and Industrial Commission. Liz, do you have a motion here?
Yes, I make a motion to appoint Michael Tesler to the Development and Industrial Commission for a five-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
We vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. Now we move to the Energy Action Committee. Bill, do you have a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Brad Carr to the Energy Action Committee to fill an unexpired term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I note, Bill, I believe that he prefers to be called Ken, even though Brad is his first name. So we'll include both names in the motion. It's been moved and seconded. We vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. Moving to Harbor Development Committee. Bill?
I make a motion to appoint Nick Amber to the Harbor Development Committee for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. And we have another opening on the Harbor Development Committee.
I'd make a motion to appoint Amy Cowan to the Harbor Development Committee to fill an unexpired term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
We now vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. So I believe that is all of the appointments that we'll be doing this evening. We will be doing others at our upcoming meetings to get all of the boards and committees filled. And Tom, I assume someone from your office will be reaching out to each of these appointees, congratulating them and letting them know that their duties are about to commence.
That's right. Now the fun part starts.
And I'd also mention to members of the public who may be listening that we have an ongoing process of accepting applications for persons interested in serving the town. There are a number of committees and even if there is not currently a vacancy, I'd urge you to get your application into the Talent Bank because as vacancies arise, we can make sure that you are promptly considered. Vacancies arrive because arise because sometimes people move out of town. Sometimes people resign for other reasons, for work reasons, for family reasons, and sometimes there are vacancies just because the term is up. So we really encourage public participation. We need public participation. So looking forward to receiving applications in the weeks ahead.
And the Talent Bank applications are on the website.
On the website for, is it the select board or where on the website?
I should have just kept my mouth shut. They're on the website. I'm not exactly sure.
If you search Talent Bank, the application will come up.
Okay, good.
The lesson learned for myself right there.
I'll let you do the next lesson by going to the COVID nineteen update.
Terrific. Thank you. So as of today, confirmed COVID nineteen cases in Massachusetts totaled six hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-four. The seven-day average of new COVID nineteen cases in the state has been trending downward since early April. There have been no new cases of COVID nineteen in Hingham over the past fourteen days, woo-hoo, and a total of one thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven cases in Hingham since the start of the pandemic. The average daily incidence rate for the town of Hingham dropped to point three per one hundred thousand residents and our percent positivity rate was point zero one percent for the previous fourteen days. The regarding the vaccinate, the vaccine rollout, according to the Department of Public Health's daily COVID nineteen vaccine report, over four million people in Massachusetts have been fully vaccinated as of today. Currently, almost fifty-seven point five four percent of Massachusetts residents have been fully vaccinated. As of last week, nearly sixty-six percent of Hingham residents have been fully vaccinated. We are currently, we are continuing to try to get the word out to ensure that any Hingham residents who still wish to get the vaccine know that they can access it locally through several pharmacies such as CVS, Walgreens, and the Hingham Center Pharmacy, as well as through the state's mobile vaccine program. Residents looking to help accessing the COVID nineteen vaccine should call the state's for help accessing the COVID nineteen's vaccine should call the state's vaccination central intake line at eight three three nine eight three zero four eight five. They can also contact our senior center staff at seven eight one eight oh four two two nine two. And I would note that recently we put a flyer or either put or are putting a flyer, I don't know exactly the timing, into the HMLP bills to notify people that, again, vaccines are available through CVS, Walgreens, and the Hingham Center Pharmacy. Regarding reopening and public meetings, on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, Governor Baker signed into law an act into law an act extending COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. This act includes an extension until April first, twenty twenty-two, that of the remote meeting provisions of his March twelfth, twenty twenty executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The new law has two major parts. First, the new law continue or allows public bodies to continue providing live adequate alternative means of public access to the deliberations of the public body. Instead of holding meetings in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public, adequate alternate alternative means may include, without limitation, providing public access through telephone, internet, or satellite-enabled audio or video conferencing or any other technology that enables the public to clearly follow the proceedings of the public body in real time. Second, the law authorizes all members of a public body to continue participating in meetings remotely. The open meeting law's requirement that a quorum of the body and the chair be physically present at the meeting locations remains suspended. More more information regarding the new legislation can be found at www.nast.gov. In line with CDC and DPH guidance, unvaccinated people are advised to continue to wear face coverings and to practice social distancing when when accessing municipal facilities to help protect themselves and others from COVID nineteen. We have installed plastic barriers at many of our service counters and hand sanitizing stations are now positioned throughout the building. The safety of our residents and employees is and always has been our primary concern throughout the pandemic. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. And Tom, I'm, I know I'm correct that the testing center that we had established in Hingham was was closed, but there are testing centers that are available at CVS, you know, through various drugstores. And have you been receiving or do you know if the town's been receiving any requests for tests and people wanting, wondering where to go or they they all know by now?
Yep, nope, I haven't heard. We haven't received any calls like that in our office.
Great. Bill, any questions on the COVID nineteen report?
No questions. Thanks, Tom.
Liz?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, I really appreciate your efforts. You've you've helped the town get through this COVID experience and we owe you a debt of gratitude. So thank you.
Happy to have done it.
Moving on to public comments, are there any members of the public who have comments on items not on the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, I'll move to town administrator reports and then select board reports. Tom, do you have a report?
I do. Thank you. So I had the pleasure today of attending two retirement ceremonies. The first was for Laurie Croak, who is the the Shrek, so the South Shore Regional Emergency Call Center, which is our dispatching center for the four regional towns of Hull, Cohasset, Hingham, and Norwell. Laurie was the executive director of the of the Shrek for the last year and a half, two years. She's been a longtime dispatcher of thirty-five plus years. She's been with the Shrek either as the executive director or as the assistant director since its inception back in two thousand and twelve. So so Laurie has given all four towns a significant service and really, you know, encouraged her to enjoy her retirement and and that was a wonderful ceremony today. Chairman of the Shrek Committee, Phil Lemniows from the town manager from Hull was at the meeting or at the ceremony today and said some wonderful words. A bunch of chiefs from the different departments came in and and also had some wonderful things to to share about Laurie's Laurie's career. So that was a that was a nice morning treat. And then I got to go from there over to the Department of Public Works where one of our longtime employees, Dave Dave Nardo. And then I got to go from there over to the Department of Public Works, where one of our longtime employees, Dave, Dave Nardo, is retiring from the DPW. Dave has been with, with us for a very long time, helped me significantly once, so I'll say publicly what happened. I locked my keys in the car, and he had to come down and, and figure a way to help me get back into my car. So while embarrassing, I, I figured I owed Dave the call, the shout-out. We had a wonderful time over there. Again, Superintendent Sylvester had some nice things to say about Dave. We had a cookout, some hamburgers and hot dogs, and were able to enjoy each other's company over at the DPW today in celebration of Dave's pending retirement. So again, thank you to Dave for his time and service to the Town of Hingham and its residents and businesses.
Anything else?
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Klein?
No report. Thank you.
Bill Ramsey?
Looking forward to seeing everybody on Sunday. Road race is at 7:00, because the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast going on this year, and then the parade starts at 10:00. So looking forward to seeing everybody out and enjoying the holiday. A lot of hard work has gone into making this happen from the Parade Committee to our public safety officials, to DPW. So happy we can celebrate this holiday and thankful for the tremendous work that everybody has put into making it happen.
Great. So Bill, I think you should add to your report that the 90-plus degree heat is not expected on July 4th. I think it's supposed to be very pleasant in the 70s, and should be a great weather and, and a great time for the, for the road race and the parade. So I'm glad about that. So in my report, I just want to make sure the public is aware. There was a statement issued from the Chair of the School Committee, Carrie Nie, that the Hingham Superintendent Paul Austin resigned for personal and family reasons that require him to return to Maine. The school committee issued a statement expressing their deep disappointment that he has to leave our district as he accomplished a great deal over the past two years and led Hingham Public Schools through an extremely challenging time due to the pandemic. The school committee will, will be meeting July 12th, and they will, at that point, be providing details about their search for an interim superintendent. So we wish Paul Austin well, and the school committee is moving forward with their review for, or their interviews for an interim superintendent for the Hingham Public Schools. And with that, again, July 4th is coming up. Looking forward to seeing members of the public. And hopefully, some will also be in the, in the road race. Tom, anything further that you need to add?
Nope, not today.
Great.
Seeing everyone at the parade.
So I will accept the motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye.
We are adjourned.